And stuff.
All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Acheson County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, October thirty first. Happy Halloween. Um, I would like to call the meeting to order and welcome Reverend Sid Stein for our invocation. Please stand.
Well, as I had mentioned before, every time I've been invited to come, there's been something that that has occurred. So um, it's kind of scary to be here with you. On Halloween, but um. Uh, then I was reminded, you know, we know in the scripture, of course, obviously, that um, perfect love drives out all fear. So um. Whenever there's a fear of doing the right thing, saying the right thing, um, if we do it in love, we always know it's the right decision. So with that, let's um, let's pray. We come before you, great God of all. Not to ask for blessing as a stamp of approval for the work here, but rather the blessing of your presence. To guide and strengthen in the challenges of leadership. And the responsibility to care for one another. May there be gratitude for the privilege and trust that has been afforded this elected body. May they be a blessing to the needs of all our neighbors. With thoughtful decision making and ethical action today. And each day, knowing that the decisions made here have a lasting impact. For children, adults, and all your people that we call neighbors. Those you are Lord, call us to love. Amen.
Thank you so much. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public comment. Okay, seeing none, approval of minutes. Perfect. All right, so the minutes we reviewed were a rough draft and we um, had had uh, Mr. Henderson. Um, also add to the Senior Village um. Paragraph um, as far as the deadlines uh, for. Senior Village, sorry, I'm looking. So. The board discussed extending the deadline to receive proposals for the purchase of Acheson Senior Village. Jeff Perry, Chief Executive Officer of Amberwell, had reached out. To the board about extending the deadline for proposals for the purchase of Acheson Senior Village. Amberwell was not included in the initial marketing communication. But had interest in conducting due diligence before deciding whether to submit proposal. So we just wanted it to be known to the public that the extension was due to Amberwell not being included um. In any of the the marketing efforts. So that's why we um, felt it was in the best interest of Senior Village to include. Um, anyone that had interest, especially locally, and so we just extended the deadline um, out to Friday, November third at five P M. So. Um, I would look for a motion to accept the minutes with this alteration.
I'll make a motion to accept uh, as. Changed to. I'll say it.
Okay, then moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. All right, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Rebus.
Um, I would just say, I might be safe on Halloween, much after the kids. Uh, the Halloween parade Saturday was really good. There was a. Smaller turnout than usual due to the uh, potential bad weather, which turned out not to be so bad. But uh, it's nice to see a nice crowd out. So I'm good.
Okay, um, I'm gonna save the, yeah, have a safe Halloween and remember uh, to do your uh. Civic duty uh, vote on next week on uh. Tuesday, this November seventh. We're not having the meeting that day due to the uh, clerk's office being extremely busy and. Uh, tied up with the election process and then we will, when did we say where we're gonna canvass then?
Monday the thirteenth.
Okay, Monday the thirteenth.
Okay. Um, I do not have any comments today, so. Uh, new business. I had two purchase orders uh, from Joint Communications um. I would look for a motion to approve purchase order. In the amount of fifty six thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents for the annual service agreement for the Joint Communications Radio Consoles. Uh, to Motorola Solutions.
So moved to question.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Question.
Is it the same amount as last year? Is that a fixed amount every year?
Um, I don't think it's on and she. We told her there wasn't a need to come.
I'm just curious and find out later.
Well, and. Annually, let's see, contract start date, November first. It's just as the recurring this year. Or what's proposed.
We can move forward, I just wanna know that if it escalates or actually moves down.
Okay.
That works.
It's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Okay, and there's a purchase order um, from Joint Communications to T S Connord in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. For Microsoft, Microsoft three hundred sixty-five email implementation. This is a fifty percent down payment.
So. Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Okay. Um, we had uh, Mark Ziltner, Finance Director on here for the audit contract award, however, um, that will be removed because last week we voted. Um, to move forward with uh, an engagement letter to Varney and Associates, so we will be doing that. Um, I had one other thing, um. Jack uh, Fairs with G I S came in this morning and was wanting uh, breakdown of the ARPA expenses. He was gonna create some. Charts or he asked for it from Mark um, to send information. Did you guys request? Charts or graphs or anything from them? He said it would be for commissioners and I, I wasn't aware of anything, so just wanted to. Okay.
Roger's out of town, maybe he has something to do there. I don't know.
Okay.
No idea.
Okay. Um, so that was the only other thing that I had other than. What's on the agenda? Justin Prejean will uh. Be here next. And. Well, I got for eight months, we got a few minutes. Oh, yeah.
Got a little thing. Um, in the past, uh, on part of the N E K E S, the Environmental Services Editorial. And every, every other year, they do an installers conference, which is they invite all of the people that install for them. Uh, it's an education for them and they get their, actually do their licensing or permit permitting the installers. Uh, to to do the work on behalf of their designs. Um, in the past, the commission, we've. They've been using the Blue Billion in Effingham and the commission has picked up the the rental fee. And so they asked, if I would ask if. If we were interested in doing that again, it's just the rental fee of the Blue Billion for the day. It's just something we've. Have done in the past and it's. Needs to be. Approved if if we're interested in picking up that, just to keep, I think initially it was to. Attract. Uh. A function into the county and uh, it was, it's worked out. I think they would probably uh. Utilize the Blue Billion either way, but in the past, the commission's picked it up, so. I didn't know if your thoughts are really in some of it.
We've been doing it already. Doesn't that show up in the budget every year or somewhere?
I was wondering if we could offer Memorial Hall without having to pay. Uh, as a.
Well, they they serve a meal and everything. They kind of need the kitchen space.
Okay.
And see, it's, it's really worked out well because they do have that up there with the small kitchenette. Type thing with the Blue Billion.
And it's a regional meeting, so there's other counties coming in, there's people coming in.
Yes, it's um. Well, I'm saying it's probably forty-five to sixty, you know, kind of depends a lot on the day if. Yeah. If it's a very nice day and they can be out uh, dozing and and putting in certain, uh, you know, that type of thing, or it's hard to get a crowd there that day if it's.
How much are we talking?
Yeah.
How much?
Oh, rent was. Maybe hundred and a quarter, I'm thinking. Oh, yeah.
And does that come out of?
They're just not counting general.
Okay.
So I'm, do we need to vote on it?
County General, okay.
And that's your answer, right?
Commission. I, it's, it's all all right with you guys then.
Yeah, have, have we ever talked to them about? Just allowing it as a benefit to the county? I don't know, I'm just.
The line what?
The use of it.
Well, we've, I think they've just asked us in the past, or I've asked on behalf of them since I'm on that before.
Yeah.
And uh, I know the first time. I was kind of, they didn't know where to really have it and I'm going like, I think the Blue Billion at Effingham and so to kind of try to get them. To come, I mean, it's, it's, it's a nice thing for.
Yeah.
To to get people to come to Effingham, you know, to the county and uh, so we offered it the first year and so they've been asking, so.
Awesome.
Thanks, thanks.
That's fine, thank you.
Sounds good, yeah, thanks.
Usually then they also have local caterer, you know, somebody that comes in many times, it's very local. So that kind of, so. Little perk.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
You actually need a motion on that or?
Hundred and twenty-five thoughts. I think just having the conversation so we're all aware of it is.
Thank you. Fine.
Um, speaking of all where, um, I was supposed to ask. How you guys, do you want the Board of County Commission to send an email to Effingham about not? Doing their I T services, or do you want our I T director to do that, or our county counselor? Or how do you want to notify them? I told, I said I would ask your preference today and let Wes know.
So was that?
Are you okay with just drafting a letter?
Sure.
On behalf of the board?
Yeah, so we didn't want to give them a little more time to find some of the data though, we.
I mean, that was in May that we, it's in the minutes that we decided.
Right.
That was a little six months ago.
I mean, we, we didn't notify them then, I don't think, did we? Not that I'm. And then we talked about it then, then we finalized our budget much later, so I think we probably should give a little notice.
Well, and.
I don't remember what the agreement calls, my terms of notice.
Yeah, maybe we could look at that.
I can find it, I was here.
So did we actually? Vote to terminate them doing that or anything? Because that's our intention is to definitely. Um, not do that.
These been crazy, you're handling.
You just wanted to make sure someone was the commission drafting a letter. So if Pat can do that on our behalf, that would be.
That's fine.
Great.
Um, also, what? Do we want to do with the Senior Village Board? The Advisory Board, uh, Lindsay canceled the past couple meetings and just canceled our meeting tomorrow too. So.
Need to meet. Okay.
Well.
I.
I'm only one of, like, I want to have this conversation with you guys because it, she, so the point of the board was to offer um. Assistance to our admin um, in all the capacities that the board holds. I mean, they're experts in many areas that Senior Village could lean on. So once she was hired as admin, because when, when we didn't have an admin, I was doing the agenda. And it kind of calling the meeting and then Finance Director, H R, uh, Pat, we would all kind of facilitate it. Once we have an admin, we kind of put that on her of what her needs are. Um, but it's just been canceled the past two and just got canceled tomorrow. So I feel like the board is probably. Because all I've done is just forward, hey, we're canceling tomorrow, so we probably need to determine. I guess I want to communicate with them, like, if we still want them to meet monthly, what the capacity is, if we're gonna have them part of any of the. You know, the bid process when, like, I'm asking for your guidance, because I feel like they play a good role when I've been at meetings.
There's a lot of expertise there.
Yes, sir.
They need to have a meeting. I think it's imperative that they meet, yeah.
Okay.
I would agree, um, and what was the reason for this latest cancellation?
Um, hers, her, one of her children had a dentist appointment. And the last month was because of the COVID rules, which. I was asked about that because then the high school students were in there. And so I just want a clear understanding from you guys. If we still want the Advisory Boy Board to play a role, what that role looks like and, I mean.
They felt make decisions that have helped improve Senior Village and, and they can meet offsite, they can meet in this, they can meet somewhere.
Okay.
So I think, I think, I think it should be made very clear. To the administrator that they will have a meeting.
Okay.
And hopefully sooner rather than later. And there's, there's nothing else, give them an update on status of Senior Village and. And some of the good things that have happened with all their health and their input. I think it's good to hear that too.
Okay.
I mean.
Um.
And I think they should be, there's probably a role for them in this process.
Do we?
Forward.
Do we want to invite, so the meetings are monthly, the first. Wednesday of the month. So do we want, since she canceled November's meeting, do we want to invite the Advisory Board to one of our meetings? To just, or not, to visit with them, or you just want meetings?
Kind of needs to be.
Yeah.
A, a, but they need to have their meeting.
So we just need as a board to give the administrator direction that she'll have a December meeting.
Or in November still.
Yeah, reschedule for sometime in November.
In a week or so.
Okay.
That's what I'd suggest.
Yeah.
Okay.
December gets tough. If anything, cancel the December meeting and have one now.
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't want to speak on behalf of the commission without talking.
Appreciate it.
So.
Yeah.
I will, um, I will, I will let her know that.
I think you have a November meeting and maybe a plan of January meeting. I think, I honestly think December's tough for everybody, so. That's, that's a tough meeting.
I just emailed her to ask for to um, reschedule. Also, I guess I could have acknowledged in Commissioner comments, I did get a Citizen Anonymous feedback form. Um, and I kind of chuckled because it was about the extended curbs. Um, it says the extended curbs need to go too many near misses with cars. Trucks go over the curbs and it's unsafe. I was kind of worried they were pointing the finger at me because my husband, we left the farmer's market on Saturday and he drove over the curb accidentally and then he. I got that anonymous call and I'm like, what perfect timing, like. He didn't mean to, but it was just a sharp, like, he accidentally hit the curb and I, then I got that anonymous, I was like, someone's watching me.
Does he need help driving those big vehicles like that?
Man. Oh, man. But it was just, it was funny timing, so I just wanted to acknowledge that one before, um, that that doesn't have any.
The other thing I saw was about the bridge lights and so I think.
Yeah, that's.
People are infusing what's role the city has, what role the county has.
Yeah, which I know the bridge lights, uh, Pat Weiser has kind of taken on. He's been applying for grants for it and they know the importance. It's just trying to figure out.
Yeah, and I talked to him recently and they've got some, they've got some great ideas how to correct it. It's whatever.
Yeah, so before I filed that constituent feedback, I just wanted to acknowledge it and um. Again, any curbs, that's all the city, not, not really us, so. Um, but appreciate. The platform to, to share your thoughts.
You just got a minute or two.
Okay, I just got an email from Michelle. Justin has asked to be moved to the meeting on November thirteenth. I have him down at ten twenty-five for this meeting. I apologize for the late notice. Um, so Justin will not be here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm just curious, you mentioned that there's some development happening in Effingham. Do they do a building permit or something in Effingham to track when there's new things?
Well, I'm not exactly there. I'll tell you what, a little, I know, I know that they. Came to the City Commission and presented their. Preliminary drawings and and things like that. I know they were talking about the street, I believe it's George Street. Ends at, at where the property begins anyway, when they will, I guess, put in the street uh, up to the. Uh, City of Effingham specifications, so then eventually Effingham will take over the maintenance of those streets.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I'm just curious that works out there. I know. Let it's here, there's a building permit, I know. How they do it there, because you need to build a track on it, so.
You know, that's, and I think I said a little something to you this morning and uh. Before we got on camera, the, the uh. There was, it, it looks to me like that that would be a flood plain. And I actually went to Roger Denton and asked him about it, but you know, it's uh, you know, you, you hate for a development to go so far. Down the road. And maybe something like that would, they wouldn't have even thought of looking at, although it's, it's not a flood plain, but there is a. Drainage issue with that property.
Yeah.
Um, well, I'm sure no plan for that, but I was curious how their process worked.
You see, Joe wants to come back soon.
Yeah.
I wonder if Julie can send that, she said they email it, yeah, I wonder anyway.
For what?
About us not being here next week. And it might be good to get that out.
We were gonna have Michelle do it.
Oh, Michelle can do it, okay.
Um.
Because she offered to our thoughts.
Yeah, but it's. Um, meeting timeline, I'm gonna send Michelle an email right now, because I know she's Saturday.
Beginning today, we can still get a meeting.
And then that win needs to be on the thirteenth of, on the Monday, which is also different, so there's. Two weeks in a row that it's off of normal.
And I, I can't even try to zoom in on that. This is, most of these means I'll have in Chicago, we're gonna be on weekends. That's the one exception.
I was gonna say, if it was maybe a presidential election where we're canvassing, you know, that was, yeah, just. School boards and uh, city uh. Proficiences, uh, I, I don't think it should be a problem.
Wouldn't a real big slate either, wouldn't like there was.
Twenty candidates, so. Except for in Effingham. There's nine candidates for five positions.
I did see it, yeah.
It's. Exciting to see.
That's good.
Their signs up and. I. Of course, that's inner city, I don't know what they're. After, but you know, usually people have something that sparks their interest in running. Normally, they have to beg people to do that.
But yeah, they change, change very often. I don't either, because I'm just the engineer coming.
Okay.
From uh. M H S or Minish.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to see if we were on the same page on.
So I can do my other, but the other one. We'll have to wait for the bid openings. Everyone this morning. Yes. They get everything. The, the bid opening, we'll have to wait until closer to ten forty-five, because there was, uh, I think, interested. Contractors wanted to watch and then uh, there's supposed to be someone coming from. Minish that uh, sent out the bids and everything to be here when we open. So we'll start with the Bridge C. The Bridge twenty-nine point eight, the C five. That uh, a farmer fell through with his combine. And our discussion would be. It doesn't seem to be actually on a road, you know, as we discussed earlier with. With G I S Department. Uh. Build, Bridge was built nineteen forty-eight. It serves to another field from everything I've seen. Do we, you know, what, what, what are your thoughts beyond what we should do with this bridge? I mean, there's been an accident report filled, fill out. Uh, I haven't got the information from the Sheriff's Department yet, but. Are we going to expect the landowner? To fell through to his insurance, repair the bridge? Or what should we be doing with this bridge that isn't? We don't know if it's on a township road or not. It's being, it's fenced off right now. It's being, it's fenced off right now with an electric fence on the west side of the bridge. So then there's cattle in there. I've spoke to the landowner on the north side and he said he would like to be able to use it to access his property. And it's a seven ton weight limit bridge.
Well, I'm thinking that since it is the seven ton limit and they exceeded that. They would, their insurance should be. We've, yeah. Would, would it be any different than the accident that happened on the River Road Bridge that?
The only difference is, we know for sure that road. Is in our database as a road. This one here. They're still in question whether it's actual.
Well, does that remove?
The way I understood.
If this bridge is in our inventory and has been inspected and, and, and our bridge, does it matter whether?
I don't know.
Township road or not, or? I mean, I, I.
I, I mean, the fact that it's in our inventory in the, in the, I think it was nineteen forty.
Eight, eight's when they built it.
When it was built, that we decided to build a bridge there really suggests that it's on. The township road. So I, I mean, I, I think it's very likely that it would be. At least at that time, it was on a township road. Um and I don't know what business we would have building bridges that aren't on public roads. So I think it's pretty likely that it is on. But. An open public road. And that being the case. You, I think you should consider that it is on a public road.
It is just field access, though. I mean, it's really not a. As far as I can tell.
Yeah.
As far as I can tell. And then, and then uh according to the, the email I sent you guys, it had the uh. Property lines, if those property lines are right, the bridge is actually on uh the Boulder East Partnership property and not the, is it W? F L or Bunks? I don't know exactly the, the name of the property. Woods Hill.
I've eaten a lot of those.
W what?
L F Hills.
Yeah.
So I'm just putting myself in a constituent standpoint and asking questions so I can better understand. Um because at the end of the day, like whatever it is, it's long-term solutions. Um if this bridge. Is only on field access, which. Is there a way, like I guess weighing the pros and the cons of, of every decision of the people involved in having the conversation with them? If I'm a landowner and I have this bridge on my land. Can I ask for it to be removed from inventory in a, and? And, and keep it on my property as mine. And the only reason I'm asking is, we all know seven tons is nothing in today's agriculture world. And if the point of. What's better for me, right? Is my insurance paying to correct your bridge that will never serve my needs ever? Um or is it in my best interest to come to you and say, look, I know this is not going to serve my needs? And you're gonna have this seven ton limit and it's not gonna work and it's in the middle of my field, in my neighbor's field. Um. And, and again, this is not, this is hypothetical, me trying to understand on behalf of constituents if they ask questions. Is it in the best interest of me owning the land with the bridge to say, take this out of your inventory, I'll fix it? How I need to fix it to make a crossing, so I never have to worry about this again. I can take my equipment over it how it needs to be. Um all of those things, because for us as commissioners, when we're prioritizing needs of bridges. It's hard to prioritize a bridge that sits in a field with, with two parties. Yes, it's failed. It's a failed structure, but all those things, right, of criteria. So I don't, I just want to understand the options. Um.
Well, it goes right back to the same situation we're in with the other bridge. And I think more of this is gonna come up as these structures keep failing. And there's no houses on these roads. There's no bus routes. There's nothing that we would be able to apply for. To get grants or anything like that to help with them. Uh this is gonna be a continual thing, I believe. And, and I don't know. You know, I'm just giving you the best information I can. I'm, I don't know if there's a possible way that they can come in through the neighbors, but then you end up with the same thing that we're gonna talk about in a little bit. You know, if that property changes hands, then what, what do we do? What steps do we take? Or do you guys take?
They're all trying to mediate a agreement for easements and give away the road and the bridge to the landowner and just say, let me try to have easements and. Even if we pay some legal costs to help get those easements, if that's still cheap for long term, then.
But you, but you also look at it, okay, if it's actually on. On the Boulder's partnership instead of the other one. You're actually giving it to them, then are they control, are they gonna be controlled? So you'll make the easement so they can both get through it, okay?
Most of them have access, that's what they want. And they must have access another way in because there's gotta be bigger equipment going in there. It's not going on that bridge.
Well. I, I don't, I, all I know is, is I saw the combine line. I don't know if a semi comes out of there or a grain cart comes out of there or what. All I know is what I. You know, and you guys have the pictures to show you what. But whatever, my opinion would be in its decision for you guys, whatever we do, we need to be consistent with what we're doing everywhere else.
Absolutely.
Because who'd have dreamt all this would have happened within the weeks that it's happened? And, you know, it's hard enough for us on a bridge. We're spending twenty thousand dollars worth of planks on one bridge that crosses the Delaware River. That's actually on a road. And then today we're replacing forty boards on another bridge. It's on an actual road that's open. Uh that's gonna be eight or nine thousand dollars worth of material. Uh these expenses add up and it's really hard to budget for all of these. And we don't have, we honestly don't have a big enough budget to budget all of our issues.
So are there statutes that would say that if, that we can't land lock? Someone by closing a, a bridge or a road? Because that's in essence what some of us would be doing if we just. Now, if we negotiated a settlement, you know, some kind of easement, but I don't think that, then there will necessarily. All landowners would go for that option because A, they can't afford to build a bridge or a low water crossing on their own. So they aren't gonna want. They're gonna want the county to do it. So I.
It depends on how it's done. Um there's a process for vacating a road. And as part of that. Anybody who's affected by it, any other landowner, for example, who would become landlocked, would have the opportunity to present a claim for damages. Um and so i- in that way, there's. There's not really a requirement that you don't do it. There's a disincentive for you to close a road that. Cause someone's land to become landlocked.
Um so what does it take?
One with regard to not fixing a bridge. Uh there, there's not, there's not something similar. Um so you're not under a requirement to, to do that except the political pressure. Uh this is how I access my property and you remove my access to the property. Uh so. Um that's a political decision, not how you want to address that. Uh if you're interested, I, I would think it would make more sense to formally vacate the road than it would be to just. Turn the bridge over somehow, make the bridge private property of the, the, the farmer, the landowner without. More formally. Determining everybody's rights on it.
So if you have that, what does it take? If there is one protester, does that stop the vacation of the road?
No, it's uh the vote of the, the board. But then it isn't, that person may have claimed for damages. And you'd have to contend that they're playing for damages. But they'd have to present that to you, that this is the amount of damages that we have. Uh there have been some. Fairly ridiculous cases in western Kansas about closing a road and claims of damages. Millions of dollars claiming they had to buy another farm to gain access to this property that I had. Those, those. Claims weren't successful, but it did require a couple of trips to the Kansas Supreme Court to have them. To figure out what the law was. So there can be some expense involved. Uh even if you don't end up paying damages. You, through the process, you would find out what the claims for damages were before you make a decision on.
Well, and I, I mean, I just want to clarify some of my questions because again, politics for me don't come into any of this because. I just put myself in their position. And if it's a county bridge, like here's how we handle it, right? County bridge, someone screws up, their insurance pays to fix the bridge. Okay. I look at long-term solutions and that's good, that's fine. If we, if we go through that same process, but. It's still not fixing the solution of farmers accessing their field with today's equipment. And what if it happens again next year? Then like the, I just like solutions and like what's best for the, the landowners, what's best for the, the end users, it. And you can probably sympathize with that because, because you do run combines. And it's like, okay, you're running a combine over a structure that's been there eighty years. And you're like, there's an issue and now your insurance pays to fix it as it was. And next year you drive it across and the same thing happens. Like there's not, we're not forward thinking of a solution. We're just fixing the problem at hand and that doesn't help anybody, in my opinion.
You know, how many bridges we got out there?
Yeah, it's like.
I didn't guess.
And I just, and that's why those, those deeper conversations in, inconsistencies with every one of. Every situation's gonna be different, but here's this situation and here are the options. And it's up to you because we're here like to represent you. We're not saying we're gonna vacate your road or, or get rid of your bridge. Like no. These are just options of like futurist, long-term solutions. How, how do we handle it?
So when we talked about the uh. The bridge on Rollins Road. And then we had the issue on a little road north of the state lake where the uh box score wasn't big enough for the farmer to get his equipment across the road. The only thing I, I would add, and I don't know how we, how we financially do this, but as they come up. Try to figure out a way to budget in the first one and then, then we move to the second one. And try to do that, you know, maybe this is just me, if they fix the bridge and they continue to use it, but we've got a, a plan. To where maybe we can put a low water crossing in there and then, and then that problem is solved. But would, we would have to be able to budget down the expense of the low water crossing. Uh that would be. I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, that would be the simplest answer. A little water crossing there is definitely gonna be easier than a low water crossing. On the bridge with, with Rollins. Uh but those are just, that's just me, because we're not gonna solve the problem with leaving the bridge. But if they fix it. And they can continue to use it until we get. A plan or, or whatever. Maybe they can, they can take their heavy loads in a different way. You know, I don't know.
Well, the feedback I got from folks is. You know, they're not, they, they, they're okay with this. They understand that you build access. Everybody understands that. But as a taxpayer, they're saying, why would you guys spend all that money on that? Bridge that's already undersized when we have other bigger needs on roads and going on. And that's their argument, I mean.
Well, I, I, I agree, but.
Cost sharing and so it's like, it was just changed to a low water bridge and. If the property pays whatever percent, we pay percent and we can, you know, get them, get them their access and still meet our commitment that we're supposed to maintain that bridge. Maybe, maybe there's a middle ground there.
Which we had that constituent that offered that with he and his neighbors, if there's an upgrade on Phillips. I mean, so, but. How it looks, we need, we need to determine how that looks so that we're consistent with.
With everyone.
Yeah, and.
Well, and then I think we'd almost need to set. A standard. Because when, when it's just a small ditch and a culvert, it would seem like we'd just go ahead and we'd fix that. But when it's a major bridge. It's like, do we have a dollar threshold that if it's over this, we do something different than if it's a smaller one? Because you know, it's.
The problem is also, uh it has to, you know, we have to be consistent with the way we do it with what our plan is. But at the same time, each case is gonna be different. It's gonna have different. Uh like the one where they cannot get to without going through the neighbor and the neighbor won't let them go through there anymore. Okay, that's different than. The next one is just, we need to add an extension on to the culvert so they can get through. Uh I don't know how we come up with what are. What it's gonna be, but each one, you, one. Uh set of rules. Won't necessarily fit every scenario. It's just whatever we come up with, what we're gonna do, we have to be consistent with it. And I think that's kind of what you're trying to say.
Yeah.
But it's gonna, it's gonna keep happening. I mean, these little bridges are not gonna handle. And I've looked into uh different culverts. Different structures, um trying to get uh estimate back on one right now that we can do that would be, excuse me. A lot less expensive than a bridge. But still, nonetheless, it's gonna, gonna have some expense to it. And then if we're involved, we still have to uh. Go through KDA and the core and all of that and what we do.
Step one, I think it's really about them talking to their insurance company and. My thought.
Because none of us want to deny people access to their properties. But I don't know whether we need to have a, a special meeting or something and we'll try to figure out uh different ways. What do you think that or?
I know it's largely a budgetary decision about what to allocate. And you're, as you know, you're gonna run into this. I mean, you're running into this with bridges that aren't failing. Where people, farmers don't have access or. Adequate access for their equipment to get to fields and how are you going to deal with that? That's a budgetary. That, that's a budgetary determination between.
So how do we, would we say the commissioner in that district sits down with like Joe and Pat and then, because. At the end of the day, going back to kind of the points that are making like. Turning this into my, um if I put myself in their shoes, turn this into my insurance, doesn't give me a long-term solution versus if you start. Talking about what are the options? What could we do? What, what do those costs look like? And if neighboring landowners determine that. An easement and to do a low water crossing makes more sense than. An insurance claim for no solution, like all of those things. Like I just wonder, I, I, I would like us to facilitate those conversations with them versus just. Us sitting at a table and saying, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. Like, well, what do you see? You know?
Right.
What does that look like?
So do you, Pat, this is my concern. There's a hole in the bridge. We drove two signs. And they can fit through them with UTVs or whatever and they've been going across the bridge. And he's got cattle back there, so I'm sure that they're gonna keep checking the cattle. With us having bridge out signs in front of it, does that release us from liability if somebody drives through and falls off?
Yeah, I, I, those are reasonable steps to alert somebody that they.
So I talked to a former uh road superintendent from a different county. And he asked me. Don't you have an emergency fund? Said no. He said, you need to look into trying to have an emergency fund. And the county he was from. And the county he was from. They took a quarter or half cent sales tax and they put it into an emergency road. So if you had one of these things come up. Then you would have the money to possibly fix it instead of having to try to budget.
A failure.
A failure. And I know that's probably not a popular, uh. Thing for everybody in the county, but at the same time. If you had, say, three hundred thousand dollars in there and one of these things happened. And you could get it pulled off and get that fixed. So people could continue on their way. You know, and it could also be something. I mean, you could have a disaster that something comes up and we've gotta find a way to come up with money. I don't know, that's just, and I know that other counties do this, they have a. They have an emergency fund and it'll state that you can put in there to take care of bridges, roads. Or whatever. They have to look into it a little more, but that's, that's the, that was one of the ideas that, that, uh, was brought up to me, because I am looking at. You know, cause I think about this, what do we do, what, what if we have one? Let's say before we get the bridge to. Uh. The Indian Hut. Done, what happens if that washes out? How are we gonna find a way to get those people in and out? You know, and those are things that it can happen anywhere. So that's, that's kinda what, uh, the conversation I had yesterday. And he, he said, and there are a lot of counties that do do that, but. Uh, not everybody has the funding to be able to do that, so. But that's one of the options that I've found. It's not something you just take and spend out of it, it's something that's there. And you can address these type of concerns, but do you? I don't know.
I think in order to get something like that to pass, you would have to have like. Policies and stuff that people would be able to look at and then you would get away from having your. You wouldn't have your case by case basis, you would have, so then you're back to square one about setting. What those. Policies would be, what would qualify for that, what wouldn't qualify for that and.
Still wouldn't wanna put a undersized bridge back in and repair it, so just go back to. Service funding.
Yeah, because that's, that's the big thing is you, you just don't. Put in another seven ton bridge, you. Not just weight, but physical. Capability to handle these twenty-four foot deck though.
Right.
And I, I haven't been able to sign out there with just the photos. Did you do a little water crossing there?
Well, I think possibly yes. Have you been out there? It would be more acceptable than some of the other ones that we have. I mean, there'd be plenty of room to slope the banks back and. That we're still gonna have to pay for. If it, if it drains more than six hundred and forty acres in hydraulic city, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Thank you, Kevin. So we would have to pay for that.
Are you open to having a discussion with them, with me?
Yeah.
Okay. You end with that?
Sure.
Okay, sounds good, thank you guys.
So, being aware on that, I'll jump just a little bit, so we go back to the concern on. Uh, Rollins Road. The, uh. Landowner called our office and asked about, when we discussed it last week about just trying to get an easement through the neighbor to see if the. Neighbor would let them all use that low water crossing as. As one of the solutions. Is that something that we should get involved with, Pat, or how? I mean, if we contact them and say, hey, will you give these, you know, I don't know, but that's one of the things, because the other. Uh, if we do go through with what we talked about last week, it's ten thousand dollars for the. The study.
I think there are ways to address it that probably make more sense than the county.
So do, was that something, I mean.
I think the conversation probably goes better for the neighbor and the neighbor.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Versus the county getting involved in putting.
And, and we may be, we would be willing to assist with the technical aspects of preparing the documents and things like that.
So.
In the end, it's really the green between the two.
Well, there would probably be a third, cause there's one other person that gets to cross it right now that would be involved in. And using it, so how do we move forward with that, I guess, then?
Well, we have a, we have a meeting set up, we can hear it. You and I have a meeting.
Okay, alright. Okay. Uh. I have a. A right-of-way application from Thomas Ernson. Uh, he's wanting to. Bring Trigo Road up to township. Specifications and they need to get on our right-of-way to get the drainage off of that road into our right-of-way. I've went out and looked and I see no problem with it, but this has to be. Okayed by the commission. And there's a little, I mean, basically, Trigo comes down to two-ten. The water's been running down Trigo across the road causing us issues, when they build it up, they're gonna take the. The ditches around and, and put them where they need to be. And it has the contractor, Jody Service. And the place for you to stand right there.
You're doing that, township's doing that.
So. The way I understand it, they have to bring it up to township specifications.
Okay.
Before they can, then the township will maintain the road after that, now with that being said. I was approached by, uh, trustee on the. On the township, wanting to know if we had what those specifications would be, Pat, do you have anything anywhere that would state?
No.
So. I don't either right offhand, so I don't know if that's something we can talk to again, talk about later today. To try to get them, they wanted to know how wide the road had to be. Uh, and all that, and we will try to find an answer out and give that to them.
I look for a motion, uh, to allow, actually, we can all sign it. Uh, look for a motion to approve the Axon County right-of-way permit application. Uh, for Tom Ermsen, uh, to allow Jody Service to clean out road right-of-way ditch. To existing tube east of intersection of two hundred and ten Road and Trigo Road, I want a motion to approve. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
And then right quick before we get to the, uh, opening of bids. We have the. Uh, crane truck that's looking at possibly a twenty thousand dollar repair. And we'll find out today whether, you know, we can just buy the spool by itself instead of the computer part of it. And let you guys know that. Uh, if it needs to be done before the next meeting, we've talked about that.
So, um, yeah, based on the information that you provided on the crane truck and being kind of. Open-ended until you gather more information, I would look for, um. A motion to allow our road and bridge superintendent a one-time expense. Up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the crane truck. Um, based on the information he gets, the reason I'm asking for that is we don't meet next week and then we meet the thirteenth so that. You don't have to wait two weeks to get approval to, to move forward on a, on a fix, so. Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass six, three to zero. And then you can give us an update on.
Oh yes, I will, anything, anything that, well, anything that happens, uh, I will send an email to all of you.
Okay.
On what's, what we find out about that. So, uh, as far as just the update, we're working on these wooden bridges, putting blanks on them. Uh, we're gonna be a little bit short and we've got a bridge down by Arrington. That's been closed for a long time, that's got some pretty decent deck boards on it, and if we need to, we will go down there. And pull those boards off and use them where needed. What's that?
Uh, it's entrance on two sixty-second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Sorry. Yeah, nope, I missed that, I was seeing Kevin here was. Uh, so we had another meeting with the entrance on two sixty-second with Louise. This time it was Casey and I, and she presented. A, uh, plat. Map. And she would be interested in a road study being done. For these, before she would, uh, develop this property. And Casey, if you wanna add.
So I just told, like, we were meeting today, um, and so we walked away saying we were gonna let you guys know. Um, and then. And then determine next steps as a commission, um. Of, of your thoughts and on this, cause this is a. Like I told her yesterday, like this is a completely different conversation than, than what we had with her, so just wanting to.
Okay, no, well. The scope of this is so different, I mean, like you say, it's, it's a completely different conversation. I had asked specifically about further, um, bringing this up. Uh, doing the work and she said that it was only, or the earlier meeting was only for the, the one lot, but. I think there's a lot of potential problems and, uh, I think there's a lot of. Maybe things that are anticipated that haven't been approved. I think there's in, this was done in anticipation that there would be culverts. Clear along two sixty-second road. There's anticipation, I think. That the county would maintain these roads, so, I mean, I, I don't know, I think there's a lot of. Things that we need to get straight for, goes any further.
I would agree, I think she's go back maybe to. You and the city, the planning commission with the subdivisions. Talk more about the plat.
I also have a question, I mean, to me, it's, it's a shame that. This engineering company went to all of this work. And then all of this plating. And something as simple as a driveway entrance. To where on, onto county or township roads, this is a township road too. I mean, I would have thought that that would have been something that would have been early on in the planning. I don't know how we get people to look.
This preliminary plans on the final plat that maybe where those. Details go in, that's, I'm not sure, but I think that may.
Well, but certain things can't change, I mean, sightlines don't change, you know, so I, I. And I, I don't see. Without. A major change in two sixty-second. That some of this could be accessed where, where it's plotted out. Uh, and that's a safety issue, that's not me wanting to, to be developed or not to be developed, that's nothing to do with. Anything that, you know, when this falls in our lap and we've gotta do the correct thing and have a, a safe entrance, because. The entrance that was. Proposed, the meeting, our last meeting was for a single lot. And not for fifty houses, uh, access, uh, so. I, if it wouldn't really qualify for a single. With the amount of traffic that'd be coming in and out of there. I don't see how it could possibly. Be.
The only thing that I could think and she, she wants a road study done. Would be if she was going to develop this property. You would have to have some type of road develop, or road study done to see what your, your limits, if you're gonna have that many. If, if it would change the speed on the road to where these would work. In the developments favor. If, if that made, did that make sense?
Yeah, um, the city's probably familiar with. The process of developing subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, so.
Cause there's a lot of other steps to go through here before you walk in. The planning's important, like Eric said, and to me. Just take a step back and get a few more things directly.
So is it something that, uh, we need to send her an official letter, or does she need to come to a commission meeting and? And talk to you guys, or how do we, how do we move forward with this? Because we're still a stalemate, you know, just like we were when we first started, so.
Well, you know, a- again, it's, it's a shame that all, all this much work has went into it without. Even considering access to these. Roads, but. Are, are, am I missing something, is this something that the? County needs. A policy, but yet that isn't county policy, that's ASHTO, that is the sightlines and things are what. Was the standard to give access. So I would think that. That any consideration of asking for access would be based on that, not, not a county policy.
Right, there's enough existing. How would you call it? Methods and processes with the engineering and architecture, design work that.
It's, it's like that, it's just come completely glossed over.
This was done, or pushing twenty years ago, so. You know, maybe some, uh, things have changed a little bit, maybe, I don't know, but there's standards.
And, and you know, and, and maybe. The reason for the road study would be, alright, if you're gonna add a bunch of houses, of course, that's gonna. Bring in a lot of revenue, but it would change with, with that, it would probably change speed limits and change. Stuff like that, and I think that's why she was asking for some type of study, now whose responsibility is to pay for that? That decision is not mine.
I think it goes back to development agreements, there's. If you do development group, maybe there's a trade-off where maybe somebody pays part and somebody pays part, and then there's a way to recoup that money over time, so. There's a whole lot more to this than.
Right.
One driveway.
Yeah.
Well, and that opens up, because that was my thing of like. When you look at that. It's a completely different mindset of, oh gosh, how are we gonna get this to work? Because we were going off ASHTO rules for one, two acre lot, but if you're talking about. Potentially six driveways is like, whoa, like then. Stop signs, speed limits, all the things come to mind and having. All of that determined, I'm not familiar with the whole process in. Recording it and getting it right, like, because that's her thing, is like, she hasn't recorded it yet, because. If we tell her something and she has to make alterations, it's easier to make alterations on the front end. But how do you help her with that process and is, if you're saying it's the city first. Then maybe the city helps her with that process, and then also the conversation that, there's a fifty. Sub development out there, like, will that become? The city anyway, like, I don't know those, like, I don't. I, I, on the county level, I won't understand, because that's awesome, like. Having, having economic development and, and the housing shortage, I mean, people want. Nice homes and areas in the county to develop, but that's not. How do we help her get to the finish line while still abiding by the rules we have to follow, I guess?
She's got to hire the right engineering people to do it, cause there's nothing out here about drainage, there's nothing out here about lighting. No, I mean, there's a lot of things that aren't on here. You know, in any case, they're gonna have to look at this too, I mean. You know, where you put septic, it's not gonna be a sewer out there.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, there's, there's, there's more, this is preliminary, so final plat's gonna have a lot more information and that's, that's where she has to hire engineering firm. To do that.
But so far, the, the traffic saving part of it, look. Trying to be proactive and we gave. Uh, an alternate entrance. And that's been met with nothing but resistance. You know, the. So I, I don't know what our part in, in this is from here on out, because, I mean, there's only. With our guidance, uh. It, it don't fit this template, well, that's, that's not our fault.
Okay, so I just need to, I walked away from the meeting yesterday saying I would give her. What's next, and if what's next is she needs to hire an engineer. And go to the city, I can tell her that as a collective group, I just, I got, I wanna give her something, like.
Yeah, it's, well, it's just, it's, it's not ready.
Okay.
So I mean.
I also wanna repeat, because I can see this coming back, if she, they do, they, whoever. She hires or herself, uh. Uh, puts a does a traffic study. Just because they say it can be done, doesn't mean the county. Is gonna be then obligated to abide by that, because if they say, oh, we can do it, but we have a ten mile hour speed limit through that mile. I I don't think that we would, just because. There is someone that says it can be done, doesn't mean that it's gonna fit in with our vision of and our. Criteria of 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 safety. I mean. I I just don't want that to be an a misunderstanding that. You do a traffic study and will abide by whatever they come up with. No. I want that to be perfectly clear.
Well, and that's why I had suggested all like. All the key people need to be at the table together. Talking about this, including the sheriff, if he's the one that does the speed limits and all the final things, it's like. We gotta, we gotta be on the same page here, but. So. I appreciate the conversation and I can give. Direction uh, based on.
All right. You wanna do the openings, you want me to? All right.
Okay, I don't know if you want me to.
Well, you can open them and hand them to me. How's that?
I got six.
It's six different ones?
Yes. So this this bid opening is replacing a box with culverts. On Ottawa Road. Between Potter. And Curlew. It's originally was. MHS site two, but MHS is now finished. They've joined and. We have six of them, and this would be to start as as soon as we can possibly get started. So. And to let everybody know, uh, we partnered with MHS a couple of years ago. And we've got four or five, I think it's four projects. And they were uh, completed to a point where they could be put on a shelf. Two of them, we decided we budgeted in for this year. One was site one on three ten, and this is site two. On Ottawa Road and the commissioners and I looked at those sites and we decided which ones we felt like we needed to do first. Uh, so the first bid is from. Leavenworth. Excavating Equipment and Company. For the total of three hundred and eighty seven thousand. Six hundred and forty three dollars. Leavenworth Excavating and Equipment. The second one is from Julius Cause Construction Company in Leavenworth, Kansas. Has. Two hundred and ninety three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
The name again, please.
Cause. K A A Z. Julius Cause. It's third one. It's from Ebert Construction. Womigo, Kansas. The amount of one hundred and seventy three thousand. Four hundred and ninety one dollars and forty three cents. And Ebert is E B E R T. Number four. Is. From Lina Weaver Construction, Lansing, Kansas. In the bid of. Two hundred and thirty thousand. Ninety five dollars and zero cents.
Name again, please.
Lina Weaver, L I N A. W E A B E R Lansing. Number five. Is from. Betis Asphalt. And Construction. To Pika. And the amount is three hundred and fifty eight thousand. Nine hundred and forty five dollars. Number six is Bruce Davis Construction. Emporia, Kansas. And the amount of one hundred and ninety seven thousand. Six hundred and sixty seven and seventy six. Any questions?
We have an engineer's estimate now.
Yes, it's right here.
Okay.
Engineers estimate.
Nice takeaway, wasn't it?
Yes, was a hundred and seventy one thousand fifty four dollars and fifty cents. One seventy one. Oh, five four. Point five zero. So we will, I will discuss with Kevin. And we'll go over these things. Uh, these bids. And come up with a.
Recommendation.
Recommendation next, well, it won't be next Tuesday, it would be the the thirteenth, that gives us an extra week. So we can go through this. Any further questions?
I'm glad to see that we've got a lot of participation again.
Yes.
Here for several years during the COVID, we could only, it was lucky to get it, one or two.
Well, and then all these, all these bigger jobs and why we partnered with with the engineering firms is. So we can get out into the bigger market, you know, the smaller stuff that we know that our. Our contractors are uh. Happy doing, uh, we're still gonna bid those out locally. Uh, but these bigger projects, this this opens the door and gets us, that's a better job of shopping and. And hopefully get a construction company will come in and get it done and everybody's happy. Uh, I will say this part of it. Uh, there was some concern about the uh. Asphalt part of it. So. If I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong.
It was the timing.
It was the timing.
The weather getting cold, they may not be able to do the asphalt.
Till later.
Till. Later, till early next year. If it gets too cold, you don't want to put asphalt down, it's cold. So there'll be some type of temporary surfacing over it so that everything can be able to be opened up, and then they have to come back early next year when they can. Put asphalt down. Finish the actual road. Repair it.
So. All righty. All right, thank you. Thanks, Ken.
Can you get cold, can you get a hold of anything? Function well when I go. I avoid it as long as I can. Not that I'm not cold.
I wear a leg jack even in the winter sometimes. It's one thing going in out of car or something, but you're gonna be outside for a while, it makes a difference.
Little early, but thank you for coming early, so um.
Not a problem.
Corey Scott, Emergency Medical Services Director, twenty twenty four EMS plan.
Going forward, given the budget constraints that have been put forth. I don't see any way around not changing operations and how we do things into twenty twenty four to try to meet that budget. So this is a plan by no means set in stone, but this is my plan going forward into twenty twenty four. On how to try to meet the budget constraints to the best of our ability. While minimizing the impact to community service to the best of our abilities, so. Um, I don't think this can be done. With one. Idea. I think this has to be multi-pronged. And I have to find things where we can um. One, option number one on the table and probably can save the most amount of money. Is currently we're staffing three ambulances twenty four hours a day. And then when Jessica and I are available, we staff a fourth one. Uh, on weekdays during the day. Looking at going to, instead of staffing six crew members twenty four hours a day, going down to five. And instead of using overtime and things like that to backfill absences. Uh, just leaving that open when a part-time person is not available. Uh, try to keep them and maintain three ambulances as much as we possibly can with part-time staff. But stop the overtime in doing that. Now to put us back to that original staffing model we had in twenty seventeen with the two ambulances and the advanced life support equipped fly car. Concern in that is obviously we're twenty percent busier than we were in twenty seventeen. Um, we actually hit our twenty seventeen number of calls clear back in September. Uh, we're on pace for twenty five hundred calls again. Little bit difficult to manage that apples to apples, the world was certainly changed. But we averaged a hundred and sixty eight calls a month in twenty seventeen, we're averaging two hundred and two currently, so. I don't want to make it a permanent five person, but we can save some overtime there. Um, another savings plan um, that's on the table, and we've actually started to do this to a degree. Currently, we're usually staffing three paramedics per shift. Uh, we're now starting to staff an advanced EMT. More often. Again, I still want to maintain three paramedics daily as much as we possibly can. But AEMTs have a lower scope of practice and are paid less, so. That's another option. Uh, maintenance intervals on the apparatus. Uh, currently, we're doing oil changes at the four thousand mile mark on the apparatus and changing fuel filters on the diesel apparatus every twelve thousand miles. We can push that interval out possibly six thousand miles and eighteen thousand miles on the fuel filters. Uh, as far as oil changes for my vehicle, I can start doing those myself. Um, we can look at rate uh, increases for our services. Uh, looking at a three percent increase there, we look at the necessity of raising rates every year. The unfortunate part about raising rates is Medicare and Medicaid and insurance will simply ignore that and pay us what they always pay us. This will put more burden on our private pay people. We're already in the process and we assess this constantly, how we procure procure equipment. How we manage waste and spoilage, but we're digging even deeper now into more cost effective methods. Obviously, capital improvement purchases are gonna be delayed. We're gonna look more at. Uh, refurbishment and used equipment. So. That's what I have on the table right now to try to manage the budget through twenty twenty four. I will be having meetings with all of our response partners and the hospital to manage these expectations and keep them in the loop on on what we're gonna have to do. And get their feedback on everything. I've already met with Wes. And given him this plan, I spoke briefly with the fire department, and then I have meetings scheduled with the hospital early November. So. That's kind of where I'm at on it. I don't do much without a plan, so. That's the plan I have on the table at the moment. I want to keep the commission informed of that. That is some pretty significant changes to our operations. Questions, comments, concerns? How many do?
Um, so we're right now running three ambulances, right?
Twenty four hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay.
Four on weekdays when Jessica and I are both available.
So what will be different? From that versus twenty twenty four when it's the same. Amount. Cause. Other than coal. Benefits were taken out, but.
What changes is is I'm concerned about, we're dealing with eight percent inflation with everything we buy. Medicine has gone up. So, yeah, it's it's not fair to call it a budget cut. But it is constraints, and so we're operating on the same budget in a world that the prices have gone up on everything. I'm concerned about fuel increases. I'm concerned medication and supplies have gone up, they just have. So, but even looking at this plan, this isn't gonna cut fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars. We're looking at cutting ten. To try to manage that, because I'm concerned our costs will go up at least that much through the course of twenty twenty four. Does that make sense? It's not so much that there's less money. It's just going, I'm worried this can take more money to do it through twenty twenty four.
So I guess that it's easier for me to better understand when. We look at the budget and it is line itemed by fuel and medical equipment and all the things. And so like year to date, and thank you for sending me that, because I'm, it's like the more information I can. Look at and dissect and understand, the easier it is for me to have these conversations and ask some educated questions, but. So currently, we have two hundred and ninety two thousand remaining. In your twenty twenty three budget. How do you feel like with two months left, we're gonna care on?
I think we're gonna hit the number.
You're gonna hit it right on the head.
I think so, we're right on pace, now what we've spent eighty three percent of our budget. But I've also started this process. We're already staffing AEMTs more often at the time. We've already cut back. And changed some of our supplies. We're working with one of our suppliers right now for a cost-saving supply where they're going to manage. More of our waste and spoilage issues, because medication expires, I'm sure Dr. Venus understands that, and you have to have those medications, whether you use them or not. Uh, we're looking at a program where the larger company is going to pool more of that across more ambulance services and hospitals. To where they can rotate medications and help us with that wasted spoilage and have more of an automated supply stream. So we're already implementing this. Right now. And uh. So. Yeah, I I feel pretty good about the twenty twenty three number. I'm not worried about that at all.
Amazing, my medication is jacked up, that you don't use.
And the prices just go up and up and up. And the shortages drive the price increases. Yeah, it's ridiculous what what some of these medications cost, and then you have that warehouse and I'm gonna get it wrong, but in North Carolina, the burnt down.
Oh, yeah.
That prices went right up as soon as that that warehouse caught fire, the prices were going up.
On your capital purchases, though, you know, so. You know, we do have ARPA money, and we do have that.
And I have mine.
L A V, whatever it's called, what's that, what's that other?
L A T.
But we've, hasn't that been? That's already been.
We brought that up as far as.
And the one two nine fund that I haven't reserved. My only concern there is we're not putting anything back in it, we're only taking out. So we've got to look at that going forward, that we can't deplete every reserve fund we have.
You actually did shape on equipment, I think now.
Better.
Getting there, so.
Better.
Don't want to go backwards.
No, I definitely don't want to go backwards. We're in a much better spot than when I took over, but I don't want to end up. Three years from now, we haven't replaced any equipment and then.
No, no.
Here we are back to twenty seventeen. Again, so I do have concerns about that. But we're in in much better shape, and the new ambulances due to be delivered in December, which that was paid out of the one two nine fund and ARPA money, so. But.
It's gonna be. Final piece to kind of get the whole fleet back to a good cycle.
Oh, yeah, the 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 apparatus, we're in a in a really good cycle, um, not concerned about that. Where I'm more concerned is. We're still using on the backup apparatus, we're still using twenty plus year old heart monitors. Uh, we've never been able to in any. Any uh, capital outlay, improve our mechanical CPR devices, we're still using. Very old mechanical CPR devices, we've never modernized that. Um, the cots we bought in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. Are starting to show the wear and tear, so we need to be on a replacement cycle there, and I'm gonna need a new. What we'll end up buying is a refurbished or used cot for next year. So I've got enough cots to have a spare. Because given that they're. Very specific. Devices, you can't just swap brands anymore. They all use different mounts, they all use different everything, nothing's universal, so I need a spare one. Because if a cop goes down, that puts the ambulance out of service now, so. These are all things that we're gonna have to manage through twenty twenty four.
So with your twenty twenty four budget number, then, did you go back into your? Summary and like. Adjust based on your needs, I guess, so that like if we were looking at this for twenty twenty four and and. I think it's a good idea for us to have these meetings more often um, with you, because I um. It just helps us better understand the world you're living in and the challenges that you're facing. Um, and then we can, like, even if it would be monthly or something, we can go through and we can see, okay, and we're informed more on like, all right, if it's. The fuel line, or if it's the medication line, or the medical supplies, like, we can follow it along with you, so. The fuel line or if it's the medication line or the medical supplies, like we can follow it along with you, so we can better understand.
Fuel is a little different animal since we pay that upfront and all at once, so that account gets drained first of the year, but the rest of them. Go down gradually as we buy and and uh, go through our operations. So. Yeah, that's that's almost real time, the fuel, yeah, where we pay that out and some, that that's definitely not the same.
And on. Um, you sent me the aging summary to for um. What's currently outstanding with EMS and I know um, one of the things that I've learned is. Your revenues fluctuate so much that we don't take any of that into consideration when when developing your budget. Because your revenues go to the overall county.
Yes.
Uh, offsetting, offsetting.
By state statute, any revenue we generate has to go in the general fund, what you do with it as commissioners and what funds you set up and where it's funneled, that's that's all your decisions. But it does have, because we looked at that initially and I'm sure Eric remembers that. Putting earmarking that and putting it's on a separate fund, that wasn't. That wasn't okay, apparently. The state statute said it has to go into general fund, so.
That's what Mark explained to me, because that was one of the things. For me to understand of like. Your department's. Like three hundred and seventy-eight thousand currently outstanding.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, is this like, so at Senior Village, what I learned is typically anything ninety days and over. You, it's a harder, it's to collect, or you can't collect it, is that the same for this aging report?
No, not not entirely, what you're seeing there, and this is quite typical, that. That is not an unusual aging report at all. When we go through the billing process. Um, due to our chart audit and quality assurance processes that we go through, we generally bill a call two weeks after it occurs. And then if everything goes exactly perfect, usually we'll see that money from an insurance company or Medicare or Medicaid in about thirty days. What insurance companies do though, and Medicare and Medicaid, they deny it. Then we have to rebuild them. And then they deny them again, and then we rebuild them, it's a normal process, so in a lot of cases, we don't see money. From insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid. Right around that ninety-day point, once we've jumped through their hoops, played their game. And then on the private pay. That's a lot more difficult, because. Those individuals are obviously in a financial situation in some cases. That it's difficult for them to pay. So you may be seeing money where we've set up a payment plan with them that they're paying on a call from three years ago. But unlike a private. Industry that sends out an invoice and says, okay, you got net thirty to pay this thing, or we're never working for you again, we don't have that option. Just because they didn't pay doesn't mean I can't go. We gotta go take care of them if they call nine-one-one again or they're transferred. So that's what you see in those aging reports that maybe private private industry just doesn't. And so when you look at our revenue, you kind of got a more look at it in year chunks. Because we're receiving money and again, I'm sure Eric remembers this, but we put right up front, when we started billing, we said it's gonna be six months before you start seeing revenue. And it was.
Such a lag time on that.
There's just huge lag times and playing these games, and then when you're in network and I'm sure you understand, you take automatic write-offs to be in network, or they're not going to pay.
Is that show your write-offs?
Yeah.
It's, the aging report does not show the write-offs, I don't believe. Uh, but I do, we do track everything. That'd be a better Jessica question, but I can get you that information without a problem.
Yes, so twenty or twenty-five percent at least.
In a lot of cases, and then you know with Medicaid, it's fifteen cents on the dollar, that's what you get.
Okay, yeah.
That's just the way it is.
Is it the state's set-off plan too that they can collect on like? Tax, uh, if if they overpaid.
Tax rebates, lottery winnings and these types of things, what we found, yeah, judgments, what we found with the set-off plan is the individuals typically don't have much out there. We do participate in it, we take what we can. And then after it goes through all the processes that we have internally, then it's sent out to Mr. Waring. And he does have a lot of success.
What point do they go to him, like after ninety days or after?
Well, it is somewhat dependent on how much communication we get with them, so what the process is, is we send out the first invoice, if we hear nothing, we send out two more. If we hear nothing, because if somebody comes in on the third invoice and says, I'm just, I'm broke, I can do five dollars a week, we take it. Anything they do to try to to rectify that bill, we're gonna accept it. After we hear nothing after three days, it goes to Mr. Henderson, he sends out a form letter. It goes out, once we hear nothing there, then it gets kicked over to Mr. Waring, so the process isn't. Exactly this set number of days, because if people come in and try to make a good faith effort to pay the bill, we're going to accept that, we're not. I don't feel like we should be in the business of sending people to collections, that should be a last resort.
So of the three seventy-eight. What, I mean, is there?
Most have this private pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the private pay is the most difficult, and that's the ones that end up going through the collections process if we hear nothing, and there's a certain amount of that, they're deceased. They're dead. And if they have no assets, I I think the term is you can't get blood from stone, isn't it, Mr. Henderson? Is that the?
Return.
Yeah, so, once they're deceased, those pretty well get written off.
Are there any other grants or state funding or anything that would be applicable to your department?
Mm-hmm. I look at the USDA grants every year, I'm I'm hoping I can lean on Mark a little more for some of the grant stuff going forward. But that is all there, we've utilized uh, Firehouse Grant was successful a couple of years ago.
It's just equipment, right?
Yeah, and then uh, we applied for the craft grant, but didn't get that, I'm gonna apply for the craft, that's Kansas result revolving account fund grant. And that comes from like speeding fees. And things like that, so we're gonna look at that in the next year for possibly another heart monitor. So, I don't know exactly when that opens, but I I keep my. My eyes on those grant opportunities. So I'm gonna be applying for them as well, to try to help uh, alleviate some of the capital outlay. I'm hoping the craft grant is successful, that's one I'm kind of banking on. I don't see any reason we're not eligible.
You have a good resource association or something to help them steer towards those grants, we need to know what's out there.
Yeah, um, we use Kemsah, which is our lobby.
Okay.
Uh, they have a lot of, a lot of things, and I monitor the emails for them. Yeah, um, a lot of it's just. Having worked in the industry enough, you you know where the opportunities lie. So. Yeah. And I would imagine, uh, we can only apply for the Firehouse Grant and Firehouse subs, that got us our heart monitor, I think, two years ago at this point. We can apply for that every two years, so I I would imagine that's something I'm gonna do again.
Corey, write-off adjustments are between twenty and twenty-eight percent.
Yeah, I figured you know, if I have not, I had to call this.
I, I did the jabber, just a message, Jessica.
Oh, perfect.
She's on.
She's the expert, that's why we have her.
My office back in the. Eighties and nineties, it was three to five percent, and then it started doing this, this, I don't know what it is now, but it was, it was. So, twenty twenty-two.
If you want to be in network, you have to play by their rules.
He ran that one for you.
Now, did she? Yeah, I, yeah, we track ev- everything, so.
I knew she was on, so that's what I was like.
I told her to be there, make sure you're watching, in case I got a question, I can get answered.
Hey, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You guys have any other questions for Corey?
Not right now.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
It's good news to manage.
Okay, unfinished business? Can I have anything?
Did we discuss Senior Village budget?
Sorry, I was trying to, I was paying attention to him and I need to. Boy.
Yeah, it's. This last AP run and the last payroll. Were over budget, so. At this point, a budget amendment will be required. We are required to have a formal budget hearing to do that, we are required to put it in the paper. So, we will have to do that by the end of the year. We have to have a hearing in the paper ten days prior to having our hearing. So.
Um, are we gonna have any other departments that are?
Four, there's be four funds that will have to have a budget amendment. Um, the first one is our. Kansas Municipalities Fight Addiction Fund. We learned. Going to the state budget meeting, budget workshop that that they had this year, that that fund is supposed to be budgeted. Even though it's not. Um, paid by tax dollars or sales tax or anything like that, it's it's money that we get from those. Opioid, opioid settlements.
Mm-hmm.
And that has to get. Deposited and receded into its own fund. But in order to spend the money out of there, which we've already done this year, it has to be budgeted for it. So we have to do an amendment. To say that we. Going to spend that money that we've already spent.
So it'd actually be budget neutral, but it's just going through the channels to to show that it was received and it's been.
It's been, so there's that one, um. There's. Two more, can't remember off the top of my head what they are, I guess.
And they can all be.
All on one, yeah. But those have not exhausted their budgets yet, um. The other one is that I just thought of is solid waste. Um, due to the. Project out there. It was not a budgeted expense of. Some hundred and fifty thousand dollars, even though it's paid for out of sales tax money. They don't have the budget to spend it, so we have to increase their budget in order to spend it. Because it comes out of their budget and then the treasurer transfers the money from sales tax into that fund to cover what's being spent. But we didn't budget for it.
Which I remembered that budget class, like they stress, like, don't be afraid of budget amendment, like.
We just have to go through the motions.
But with, with Senior Village.
That's a little different.
This is concerning to me, um, I'm just gonna lay out all my feelings because I, this is, this is a good example to talk through about the county of. You know, we're setting budgets. And we have.
We're supposed to meet.
We have.
And stick to them.
Department heads that are overseeing these budgets, there's also deep. People involved in the day-to-day such as finance director, H R director, um, they're sending us needed information, so I guess. All of these questions are gonna revolve back to how do I, how can I be a better commissioner, because. I'm seeing this and reading this. And a bit frustrated that. I haven't said no. Over the past few months when. There's been increases um, within that. Department. Whose job is this, because as one of three commissioners, it comes off as like, who am I to say? Stop spending, like, stop giving, like, stop doing this.
Well, I've asked multiple times, like, are there expenses we can slow down on, that's not the first time I've brought it up.
Right.
But nothing happens, so.
And and that's my hard, that's a hard part for me is no, like, nothing happening, like, at what point?
And.
Because.
The H R director's standpoint, I would think that. That her stance on it would be, she doesn't. Have necessarily the authority to say, you can't work those hours, or we need to watch our payroll, or.
And she's giving us the information is what I I'm saying, so like, so I'm trying to understand that, like, the channels. And at what point do we just have to say, like? Hey, guys, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions, have some tough conversations, because to me, I guess. Reading this, I feel like it's our, it, our fault, like, of. At what point do you micromanage and say, this has got to be better, we can't do this, like? I don't, I don't know, I'm asking, I just for for conversation, because this is just one example, but. How many departments, you know, are we over? And giving autonomy is good, but like, at what point? Do you have to say? I see, I see red flags, like, can we?
Yeah.
Do something different here, so, um. I I guess I'm just, I mean, every week we're we're signing still the negative cash.
Well, and I. I I still don't understand and get this, and. Maybe I just haven't been explained in a way that I can wrap my head around it, but we have a huge payroll. Um, every two weeks, I mean, it's pushing. Triple digits every two weeks, but why do we still have agency? I don't understand. And that's a lot of money in agency too.
We have to have the R N, that's been a challenge. That's one, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you have to have. R N's record.
I don't know, you you guys read the email of what it's gonna take, I've estimated a dollar figure through the end of the year, what it would be. Um. And expenses, so. That's a lot. In just two months.
Will you have an executive session? On elected person, love. Please. Sorry guys, he's getting his spurbage, um, Jody, if Jody could come.
Yeah.
I think she, she's on. Uh, with Mark and Jody and Pat.
How long?
Uh. Let's do thirty minutes.
I moved at the board of county commissioners recessing the executive session. At eleven forty-six, and to discuss personal matters of elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy-five dash. Four-three-one-nine B one, and that's purpose of the close session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. Now the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room in courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners. Pat Henderson, Mark Tiltler and Jody Moore.
Okay, let's move in a second and all of them favors say aye, aye, passes three to zero. And we are back in open session, and I think you have a another executive session?
Yes, I'll move that the board of county commissioners recessing the executive session in the. Twelve sixteen P M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one. And at the purpose of the close session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the board come out of the executive session in thirty minutes. In the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners, Jody Moore. Uh, Mark Selmer, Pat Henderson, and Lindsay Wood. Say.
Case to move in a second and all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero.
I'm not exactly sure, but I can sure, I can check. Okay.
How about I just send an update? Every Monday.
That sounds good.
Good work.
And then if we have. Questions based on the update.
And you can visit, right?
So he, you did ask if there were like, anything that, you know, we would be looking at as far as like, um. A P costs. Um, and so I asked John. The windows obviously will have to wait, um, but like with our last generate, like they have to do a quarterly generator, like make sure our backup generator functions. Um, it passed this time, but they said we were gonna need a new battery, and that's like a car battery, so we said those were like two hundred dollars. And then. There's no heat because the air conditioning unit in my office and and where Nancy, like those do not work. Like, there's no heat in our offices, so. I went and got a twenty-dollar little heater yesterday, and so that works for my office, but Nancy and Ashley's office is absolutely freezing. And those are about eleven hundred dollars if John just orders it versus, we had someone come look yesterday to see if. He was missing something because he took them out, he cleaned them, he washed them and Nancy sparked and it's completely shot, so we at least need. One. New. Unit, and I can manage with my. Because my office is obviously smaller. So. Those would just be like, things that. Like, would take, I mean, like, would need to be done, yeah.
That's. That's when I would like Brian to see, just, you know, I, yeah, but I.
And I'm pretty sure John has, like, you know, anything major, he generally reaches out, but these things are, like, the life expectancy. Is anywhere from like five to eight years and each one of. Is anywhere from like five to eight years, and each one of these units are over eleven years old.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Excellent.
So we have a string of clients.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna chat and want and and commissioners and um. How long? I just didn't read it, I haven't read it yet.
Oh. This would be.
Fifteen.
Huh? Oh, fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
On, I'll. Send you.
And this would be attorney.
Bye.
Yeah. I'm gonna wait for him to get back. We can be reading, and then we will cut into. We're gonna need to get back to another ticket session.
Okay.
I'll move that the board of county commissioners will preside in executive session. At twelve fifty-two PM. A consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash. Four-three-one-nine-B-two, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And the board come out of execution, executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room, courthouse basement, and those present will be. The three commissioners, uh, Pat Henderson and. Mark. And Joe Snyder. Second.
Case been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero.
Did you say fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's things to think about.
Yes, hello.
All right, we are back in open session. Um, no unfinished business, county counselor updates.
Regarding the. Americans with Disabilities Act and access to the courts, um. Brian Oswald did order and had received and tested out the the chair.
The governor's chair.
Yeah, so it is here and it works. I I talked with the court administrator and they're satisfied that we're fully in compliance.
That's great.
Ready to to meet the challenges that are gonna come with the big trial, I guess they have to in December. And that's all I had.
Um, any for any more executive sessions? Approval of this expenses, do you have a motion to approve this?
So, second.
They've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass three to zero, public comment. Being none, I would look for motion to adjourn.
So, sorry.
Been moved to second, and all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero, we adjourned at one oh eight.